Okay, well, for our regular meeting then.
Sim?
Here.
Mears, yes. Price?
Yes.
Bigden?
I have to say.
Okay. Uh, the minutes from the board meeting, May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
I need to make sure to accept the minutes from May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Mears?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes. Okay. Accept the minutes from the emergency meeting, May thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Move to the set.
Second.
Price?
Yeah.
Sim?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Okay, and then accept the minutes from the nuisance abatement hearing on June fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Make the motion to accept that.
Second.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Okay, approve the payment of bills from check thirty-four-two-ninety-four to check thirty-four-three-sixty-one.
Move to the set.
Second.
Price?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Need a resolution approving the Walz Brothers for a bid of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and fifty-five cents for the Keener Road Issue Two project. After the meeting, I need all trustees to sign. Dale, you'll have to sign a notice of award as well. We'll do that after the meeting. Uh, the other two bids were waggon paving at one hundred and fifty-nine thousand and Barrett bid two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Okay. I so move we accept the, uh, or approve the Walz Brothers bid of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and fifty-five cents for the Keener Road Issue Two project.
Sim?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Okay, the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen audit is in progress. You can see all the boxes down here. He was here all last week. We came last Tuesday. He'll be here all this week as well. Your MCTA dates are listed below. The next one's at Washington Township on July eighteenth. Nine forty-one semi-weekly and other withholding state school district courtesy withholdings have been paid. I have not received the Brookville Fire EMS report, but I do have the New Lebanon report here. If trustees would like to see that. Uh, the grassroots clippings that I've received, um, I stated at the last meeting that I emailed our rules and regulations for our cemetery to the Department of Commerce. Um, in the grassroots clippings, that was due to a House Bill one sixty-eight, which became effective October twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Although in the grassroots clipping, you'll see two thousand and nineteen. Um, it has to be sent by July nineteenth. I emailed that on April eighteenth. Also in the grassroots clippings, OTA has sponsored and presented trophies and other awards to the four-H participants at the Ohio State Fair. If you are interested in presenting a state fair award, contact me and I can get tickets for you to, to attend. The Montgomery Soil and Water Meeting for the Clayton Road Group Drainage Project was canceled May thirtieth due to the tornado. Uh, they will have it again, but I have not received the notice. The copier that we received, or was supposed to receive, the C three oh eight, due to so many places ordering the new copier, um, they gave us a three, or I'm sorry, a C three sixty-eight copier. So I'd like to pass a resolution just for the auditors to have the updated copier. Um, so we got a better quality one at the same price.
So move.
Second. Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Uh, the, um, rumpie materi- the rumpie, uh, trip scheduled is for, um, June twenty-eighth. John Munir with the Community Outreach and Education Manager with Montgomery County Environmental Services. Kate and I will be attending that, so the office will be closed that day. Um, I had a call from a resident regarding a green burial and a Perry Township Cemetery was classified as a green burial. So I told her I would, uh, do some research for. I contacted the Ohio Cemetery Association and the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Real Estate and Professional Licensing, who replied the Ohio statute does not really address the question of green burials. So then I emailed OTA, received no response. I contacted trustee Steve Wolf at Clay Township since he is on the OTA board, who told me to contact the Ohio Cemetery Association and the Ohio Department of Commerce, which I had already done. So then I emailed prosecutor Nathaniel. He said he didn't know much about it. So then I contacted Gilbert's Funeral Home, who directed me to the Preble Memorial Gardens. It was very helpful. After getting all the information, um, the process takes about two and a half years to actually establish a green burial. You have to go through, or he went through, Preble County Soil and Water, Division of Forestry, Division of Wildlife, Green Burial Council of International, which is located in California, Three Valley Conservation Trust. So I relayed that back to the, the lady that was requiring about that. I also forwarded all that information on to Nathaniel in case there was another entity interested in green burials.
We had a request or ask a year, couple of years back maybe, about doing a burial in their own property.
Mm-hmm.
And that's possible to do, but you have to have, I think, fifty thousand dollars, if I recall the figure, in an escrow account for future maintenance and care of that.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Uh, reviewing past court cases, there was one from December of two thousand listed as open. I contacted Nathaniel, who directed me to the clerk of courts. And since the case is dismissed and not listed as an open case in our township records, I did get the clerk of courts to close that case. I need a... Yes.
Could you define what a green burial is? I'm stupid. I don't know.
Oh, it's, um, well, he's got it out there at, uh, what is it, Preble Memorial?
Well, what it is, is you don't get involved. You use all, uh, we want to say organic, biodegradable materials.
Materials in a casket or whatever.
There's no vault used.
And there's vaults.
No, it's very common safe.
If I may, if you really want a lot of information about this, uh, Mark and Heller Funeral Homes handles all Jewish burials, or most Jewish burials.
And they're all green.
All Jewish burials are green burials. So there is a cemetery out on Sean's Road that is, uh, two of them, yeah.
They're a hundred percent green burial.
A hundred percent green burials. So Mark and Heller will know and...
And you don't have to be Jewish.
Bradford, Conley, Lickler.
Well, policy, you can get a green burial in ours. You have to have a vault, but you don't have to be involved, but you gotta be buried within, I believe, twenty-four hours of death.
In the Jewish faith, you...
All Jewish funerals are within twenty-four hours.
Within twenty-four hours of death.
Yes.
So you could...
Well, yeah, certain faiths have, they do things like that. But I mean, anybody can be buried within twenty-four hours. They don't have to be, they have to, they don't have to be involved, but they have to be buried within twenty-four.
So all, all Jewish burials are quote-unquote green burials. So those are the two, uh...
Okay.
You could find out for nations.
That's a good resource to find out.
Sure. Yeah. Either one of those, or, or Beth Abraham Synagogues.
Or, yeah, or any of the cemeteries, Jewish cemeteries in town.
So that, that's a regular question then with the, I didn't realize that.
Yep. No vault, no bombing, no preservation, no bottom.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Caskets are over. And I need a resolution approving Officer Douglas, a pay increase for the pay periods, five-six to five-nineteen, from ten dollars an hour to fifteen.
So move.
Second. Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes. We, we did that one on the copier, correct? I just wanted to make sure we can pass over that.
Yep, uh, Price made a motion, and Mears second.
I just wanted to make sure.
Um, approved Officer Wade Meyer pay increase, beginning pay period five-twenty of nineteen, from sixteen an hour to twenty.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Sim?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Need a resolution approving the supplemental appropriation for the lights out of the general fund for one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents.
So move.
Second.
Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Rollback was received May tenth for forty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and ten cents for the fire at EMS. That was five thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and ninety-three cents. Checks to Brookville, New Lebanon for two thousand, six hundred and three dollars and ninety-six cents was sent. That's in our contract. It needs to be sent thirty days from the, the date of deposit I'll receive. Miami Valley Regional Planning emailed me saying they had, uh, safety packages for pedestrians or cyclists to be distributed. So Perry will receive twenty to twenty-five to distribute. Unfortunately, the tornado hit, so I have not been able to pick them up yet, but those will be available for the first family to get. Uh, we have had three calls regarding trash suspension service for homes affected by the tornado. That residents cannot live there, so we do have them on a one-year suspension. That's as far as the I Works program will let us suspend it. So if it's longer, it will start generating a trash bill, so they'll need to call back.
Some houses may not even be replaced.
Yeah.
So it's hard to say. That's the word that was out, so.
And then the, um, another thing that's came up with some of the homes or sheds that need to be replaced, zoning permit fees. Would you trustees consider waiving the fees for those damaged by the tornado?
I think it's okay to waive the fee. Maybe they just come, need to come and...
They'll still need to complete the application.
The application.
And the plot plan.
So that they properly are inspected and so forth. I mean...
Now, that'll be through Perry Township, Montgomery County. I don't know if they'll do it right now.
Well, I don't know, but I think that's probably a...
Get they already have one, yeah.
That would be on a replacement basis, right?
On a replacement basis.
Nothing new.
We can do that.
Yeah. That could be it.
Cause we've got, well, I don't even, I don't know the number. We've got, they're totally demolished, but there is a number of them that are pretty much totally destroyed, so.
We've had someone come in and need a shed, cause his shed was destroyed. Um, Little's, Maple Little on Brookville Piermont, her home.
Her home's, I'll bet they're walls, I think.
They're still working with the insurance.
Well, could be. I mean, he's...
She's not rebuilding. She's not rebuilding. She's moving our team.
See, that's, that's what I heard. There's some people, I mean, possibly someone a little older or something. Maybe move in with children or move to, yeah.
I think this is gonna have to be on a discretionary basis, because if we've got someone who just wants to put up a shed, that didn't have a shed before, you gotta pay the permit. But if it's something that rebuilds, I think it's gotta be discretionary.
Or a replacement.
Yeah. We need to make that discretionary.
If it's a, if it's a, if it's a tornado situation or...
Well, yeah, if it's one of those deals, yeah, we should waive the permit on that. It'd be, these people suffer it now.
Can I go ahead and have that in a resolution then? Make it in a resolution for those affected by the tornado?
Any replacement construction will be, we will waive the permit fee.
Second.
That's a motion.
Yep.
Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Also, since I'm the treasurer for the WRCG, just to inform the board here that I sent invoices, May twenty-first, uh, we have Perry's and Jackson Township payments at the time. Phillipsburg sent an email for an explanation of the invoices due to changes, explanation of the invoice due to changes in employees since last invoice mailing in two thousand and sixteen. Several emails were sent to participating and non-participating members regarding meeting dates and contact information prior to invoicing. To date, the only entity who has not responded to any of the emails is the New Lebanon Village Manager. And that's all I have. Unless there's any questions. Again, remember, I'll need signatures afterwards on the paper.
Okay, uh, road cemetery, four cemeteries, level seed graves and cemeteries are ready for Memorial Day. I didn't hear any complaints, so I think we's good shape for that. Uh, no damage to cemeteries from tornado. Uh, one in Westbrook.
Was that okay?
Yep, Piermont.
Okay.
They was all all right.
I didn't know about the stones on Westbrook.
No, they're, they're good.
Did it flop or not?
We did, uh, skip a week on mowing on cemeteries, uh, due to cleaning up on that tornado. So we did get caught back up, so they're all note. As far as, uh, the roads, uh, wanna thank everybody who helped with the cleanup of the tornado and who handed out supplies, uh, to, to the people that were in need on that. And on that note, Keener Road and Hecathorne were our hardest-hit main township maintained road. So I mean, other roads in township were, were hit, but that was county maintained. But Keener and Hecathorne was our worst. And we're still waiting on some people to bring brush and trees to the road so we can finish cleaning up. But we've been doing that for about the last two weeks.
Do you know anything about debris on county roads? I've had several people call. Is the county picking up debris?
The county is picking up tree limbs and trees.
Not debris.
Not construction debris.
Okay.
That I know of.
So...
And same as Perry. I mean, I don't think we're doing that either.
Right. So I have to tell them they have to haul it or?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure... Where was that going?
Hallow, Stoney Hollow?
I believe so, the last I had heard. I think they had switched at one point. It was going to, well, one ti- one time it was going to Cincinnati, but...
Well, the transfer station or Stoney Hollow or Cincinnati.
Yeah, but I think they went back to Stoney.
Because of the backup that they got, I talked to one of the county guys and he told me that they have opened up where the old forest park.
Yes.
That's what I heard. Someone said that.
Yeah.
And they're putting a lot of construction debris in there, just as a place to put it for right now until they can get caught up.
Can anybody take it down there or it has to be?
No, it has to be county.
Okay.
The county and state was working over there. I mean, there were living a lot of state trucks even down here in that area the other day. I come out through part of that, but...
We got a lot of, uh, non, what was it, governmental people working, getting as far as trucking equipment, trucks, yeah, skid loaders, everything helping out.
Well, I guess they were saying they were receiving at the county, the county maintenance building down here, what, four hundred and fifty to nine hundred loads of brush a day?
A day, yes.
And the county was saying what, grinding that was costing them six hundred dollars an hour.
Six hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Six fifty an hour, yeah. So, it's, uh, there's a lot of cost incurred with this thing.
On that note though, but, uh, everybody, hopefully you're gonna be patient and, you know, as time goes on, it'll, it'll spread out as far as our, the cleaning up. So I'm just kinda waiting. We get our initial clean up, so just kinda waiting some others to get their limbs and trees to the road. We are mowing roads for the second time. Uh, we did clean out a, uh, get rid of the tile on Air Hill and also a culvert on Sheep Road. Cleaned it out. Uh, two thousand and two Chevy Wilton is in the shop for rear axle repair. Uh, we are starting work. Actually, the tornado did some work for us on Keener Road Issue Two, removed some trees for us. But we are starting on that. Poles, the poles are moved. Electric poles, I think tell them poles still need to be moved. And as I stated before, Walz Brothers was awarded the contract for that work. And sometime in the future, FEMA have my contact number. I'll meet with them, give us, give them our, our time of equipment and man-hours.
There's a whole lot of stuff with FEMA that's gotta come together amongst everybody.
I think, I think Clay, Brookville, and Perry are probably gonna go together in one lump. I mean, it should be, and I think handle as one, but it'd be divided out, I believe, accordingly.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta figure out people's...
It's not, we're not doing, they're not doing anything until you're declared and then, then you'll meet at the convention center and we'll have our own FEMA representative.
I've, I've talked to some of the local college called...
Yeah, cause you're the county person.
I guess. I'm a county person. Certainly don't have all the, I can't tell everything on this, cause there's been, I, I wanna thank everybody, cause there've been so many faces out here. I, I've repeatedly seen some of these people out here. I don't always know it all to names, I mean, but we have had tremendous, tremendous response and help, I mean.
And also with Perry B being kind of distribution center, started out just for, you know, local Brookville, whatever, has turned into, you know, Trotwood and other entities reaching out.
Right. And, um, Mindy, Beth, when there has, I know spent a lot of time keeping that thing up and running, and I think it's been much appreciated by people. And I know there's been donations coming in, there's been things going out, and I, I, I don't know, in the last couple of days, I, I don't know where we've been, but I guess there've been a lot of travel getting in and out of there.
There has been, um, and I guess that's something that we need to probably talk about and decide what we're gonna do and how long we wanna do this. Um, the Red Cross dubbed us the Perry B Relief Center.
Wow.
And it kinda stuck and people, we've been putting that on Facebook and, um, some word got out that we were doing that. So the Red Cross, the Salvation Army, the American Legion, um, Procter and Gamble, a whole bunch of other big names used us as a central hub to send things to us, for us to send out, um, to all the different areas, which we are still doing and have been doing. And, um, uh, because they couldn't either get their big trucks all over the place or save them time.
Probably the most activity that little building's ever seen.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, it, there are people that would like to see us do it forever. There are people that would like to see us put it in boxes today, but I'm game for whatever township residents and you guys decide to do.
I guess you're seeing what the need is, and I, I guess we need to leave a lot of that up to what your thinking is.
Well, I know from experience, the need is just now gonna get started on a lot of stuff, because some people are just now going to their homes and going, oh crap, there's nothing left. The biggest story is that we heard from a lot of people that came in yesterday and, and coupled today even, and a lot on, uh, last Friday, were that they weren't allowed to put tarps up until after the insurance company had been there.
Oh.
And so everything got rained on. And people are coming in tearful and just, some of them are coming just to hang out and socialize because we're willing to listen. Um, it's been more than just kind of a come and collect place. It's kinda become like this little safety venue for some people who just need to get stuff off their chest. So I'm, we're going out of town tomorrow and we will be back on the twentieth. And I have a team of volunteers that are available or for that week, you know, if we could even just put a phone number for somebody to run up there with keys or something.
Yeah. Do you have the keys to that and the trailer or who has that?
Well, I, yeah.
Okay.
I have the keys to that and the trailer.
Okay.
Um, I'm still gonna go over there tomorrow. We're not leaving until like four o'clock, but...
We'll be at the airport.
We have to be at the airport at four. So I'm gonna go over tomorrow. Whatever we decide to do tonight, I'll put a sign on the door so people know what to expect. It's been in the newspaper. It's all over the website, the internet, and people are still calling saying, how long is it available? Um, Charlie, I know at some point you're gonna want your trailer back.
Well, also, I was gonna say, we, we overflowed the building and Charlie came up with the trailer, so that's, that was great too.
And the trailer, now, we've given enough away. Well, it's not as full as it was that we can move it into a smaller, into our trailer, which we never use, or a smaller trailer, or we have storage across the street at my barn, or we can store, well, not here. There's nowhere here really, but I mean...
At one point, we had it on the...
That's true. But I mean, we do have some options for storage if we want to continue to do this long-term. So it's up to whatever the residents and you guys decide to do. I'm game for whatever.
I don't have a problem with so long, but long-term, I have a little issue with because there's so much stuff, because I know that all these FEMA meetings that I've been attending, uh, St. Vincent de Paulus, they said that they'll come take it. And if they can, they put it there, they'll put it at the shelter. So those people, you know what I'm saying? If no one's coming, or if we're only getting two or three people a day, I would much rather give it to the people at the homeless shelter that could use it. I mean, you know, I don't mind.
And we've got everything inventoried and labeled and...
I think, I think from what I seen, there was probably immediate needs, and then there's immediate needs that people just discover down the, down the way.
And that's it.
That's what it seems.
Right.
And I mean, you know, I, Christian, I wanna thank her. I mean, she came up with boxes of tarps.
How about a humongous thank you?
Yes. Boxes of tarps that were just, that, that was just fabulous, that people could get things tarped and covered and, you know, it saved them from losing them. They, they, that was just...
She got donation and on top of that, she took a mon- a lot of money out of her own pocket and bought cases, two gallons of water and loads of things.
I mean, it, it was just amazing that people that's, you know, could use a tarp and save their stuff. That was, otherwise it would've been ruined.
Yeah, well, and that's what we're finding now with some of these people that are coming up, um...
And that, that was just one thing, tarps. I mean, there was lots of other things too. Water and there was, but I mean, that was just one thing that seemed like people really appreciated and, and you know...
One Doc Rhodes donated like three hundred and fifty tubes of toothpaste and toothbrushes today. So I have toothbrushes and...
But you know, it is just...
We'll think about things like that too, neither one.
Right. It was a miracle that we didn't have no serious injuries or loss of life. That was, you know, I, we, we had a horse.
Well, there, there was one resident that passed away from a heart attack and they're kind of attributing that.
Hearing the tape?
Yeah.
I hadn't heard that one.
Yeah. There, I don't know the name, but I, I did know that somebody died from a heart attack and they said it was probably from the stress.
Yeah.
So, um, but I mean, it, you know, we, the, the other thing people are running into now is those who've been off work are starting to run out of money. So...
Right.
Rather than spending, like a lady came yesterday, said, if I can get all my toiletries from you guys, then I can buy meat instead. You know, so I, I think, you know, that if we still have a steady flow of people, we still have a lot of people asking and coming. It's up to you guys however...
Well, I think, I know Judy and Paula have helped a lot up there, and I think if we can keep it going for a while here, I think it's, I think there's a big need there yet. I, that's the way I see it. I mean...
Dale and I were talking and, and, uh, of course, I don't know near the people he does. He knows everybody in there in Oklahoma.
I don't know about that.
I have never seen that outpouring of generosity and caring like I saw during this time of need. The great people of this township just overwhelmed me with, with what I saw. They just really...
The whole Brookville area.
Yes.
The town just all together.
A lot of people, you know, a lot of people don't know that that area that was hit in Brookville was part of Perry Township.
Right, that terrace park.
And so we had a, a big outpouring of people that, you know, received help there too. Just amazingly to see a community come together.
We tried to count houses. That's, that's, that's almost impossible. We were up to two hundred and seventy some that we could for sure see had damage, but I'm sure we missed houses.
We, uh, we, yeah, our insurance company came out, you know. It's hard to say that, I thank God, we only had eleven thousand dollars worth of damage when I looked at everybody else. I mean, it's like, really? Why?
Well, what I seen, Air Hill Road to the east was the worst, correct? Your house and a couple others.
I think our house, the back of our house, and, well, cause we're right there near, not far from Keener and not far from Hecator. But yeah, the front of our house, other than there's no gutters, and we don't know where our shutters are, it looks pretty normal. The back of it.
There's not a gutter on the house though.
I had a, had a lady in Brookville, uh, back in Terrace Park, I was talking to, and I said, well, it appears like a few of these homes around here fared a little bit better. She goes, it does appear that way, but come here and let me show you some. She took me around the backside.
Now Rachel's best friend.
Oh my, different story there altogether.
Rachel's best friend's parents live, I don't know, Doyle.
One sixty Doyle.
There's just nothing left.
Their motor home was in a tree.
Their motor home, yeah, full-size motor home, in a tree.
Well, it's like Maple Little, it looks like you can rebuild it, but you go inside and the I-beam is completely moved and it's overcome, so it's not, no.
You know, there was a, there was a lady, I can't think of her name, on Diamond Hill, the lady.
I'll meet Cheryl.
And, you know, I, I don't know how that lady could be in the spirits that she was, cause she said she went to the basement with a flashlight, a book, and a cellphone, thinking, okay, it's just a storm. And she said stuff started appearing in the house after she started hearing a lot of cracking and breaking out of the barn. And she said, she thought, how's these things out of my barn coming in the house? She said then the stairs pinned her against the wall, and she looked up and there was the sky and the house was gone. And you know, now, and, and the lady was in great spirits, and I'm thinking, boy, everything you had is scattered everywhere.
Oh, the resilience was incredible. I couldn't believe she was in that kind of screw.
I know.
I did an inspection on a house today over on West Brook Road, and the, the guy's barn was just gone. And it was amazing because the floorboards in the hallway of the house had raised, no structural damage on this house anywhere. But the floorboards in the hallway had raised, uh, set back, and I, I, it's amazing.
Arse buffled in the living room. It bounces now when you walk on it, but.
Okay, just in a couple minutes' time, everything you got can be gone. That's, that's just.
Yeah, I always wanted a waterfall in my bedroom. Now I have one.
Shut up.
Okay, Rhonda, was there anything else with zoning that you had?
Uh, Kate has a report. Does anybody wanna read that, or? Can I see what's there?
Oh, yeah, okay. Uh, let's see, zoning report, third quarter trash bills will be mailed late June or early July due to, due date to avoid late fee will be eight, one, nineteen. Suspending trash bills in the third quarter for properties restored by tornado. Uh, zoning meeting, um, zoning commission meeting was held on May sixteenth. Letters to Moe was sent to Grace Home Farms. Chief Road has Moe did more to the situation file, file available. Dayton, Eton Pike, Moe, Brookville, well, we've already went through those. Uh, Eton Pike, uh, nuisance abatement hearing for the week of six seventeen. Norso for Springs, uh, for, uh, abatement hearing for six seventeen.
Well, that's for the Eton Pike, the Sulphur Springs, we need to set a date. When will your trustees be available the week of the seventeenth? For another nuisance abatement hearing.
Oh, you want a date?
A date for sailors and pro. Well, say Moe, then we can cancel.
Well, what do we got, two?
Anytime the week of the seventeenth.
The seventeenth is what?
Monday.
On the Monday.
You guys think? Do you think on the twenty?
Do you wanna do it when Kate is here?
Nineteen to twenty.
Yeah, the show, Monday through Wednesday, she's one to five.
Okay.
Thursday and Friday.
Nineteen to twenty.
Kate's not here. She just committed one.
She can come back, yeah, I just didn't know what to do.
What about the twenty-first, Friday? Twenty-first? And she's here at nine. Nine, okay?
Yeah.
Six twenty-one at nine. Okay, and then a nuisance abatement hearing was held at four one five eight, oh, Little Richmond Road, and the property cleared a nuisance. Property owner and lien holder will resell the motor on June fifth, saying they had until June twelfth to mow and clean up debris. If not mowed by June twelfth, the township will mow, and the property taxes will be assessed if the invoice for the township services is not paid. So Mike, if they're not mowed by tomorrow, you can start mowing.
Tomorrow at midnight.
So this will probably be Thursday, you think, that you'll know that?
Unless it's raining.
Barring any of that.
Sure.
This is right next to the door, man. I'm tired of the ticks and all that.
Uh, the new business, May twenty-third, spoke with Suzie Craybill from MC Land Bank about vacant properties in the township. Once the taxes have been delinquent for one year, the land bank can initial the foreclosure at a cost of two thousand dollars per property. The township would then own the property and be responsible for mowing repairs, but could turn around and sell the property. June thirteenth, Paul Bradley from MC Treasurer's Office will be at the township at nine thirty a.m. to discuss what his office can do to help the township. Reminder, the office will be closed on Friday, June twenty-eighth. Submitted by Ms. Christian.
Yeah, you said something there about tax. Something about taxes. That's, that's the other thing, the auditors regret, he's, he's just dreading sending out the tax bills, cause he says, I gotta send out a tax bill of some houses that aren't there. And he goes, you pay in a year in, in the rear, and he goes, you gotta send them. And it's like, it's like. Okay, uh, I guess we'll go to the police department.
Uh, working on narrowing down the date in August, I'm gonna be contacting, uh, ODNR about stocking the pond up for our fishing derby. So as soon as I have that make, that date nailed down, I'll be posting it on our, uh, police, uh, Facebook page and on our website. Also looking at narrowing down the time, uh, for November for the archery safety day and target practice. Spoke with Gary today about the new cruiser that was purchased, um, that should be completed by Friday of next week, so we'll have that, hopefully for the weekend, no later than the following Monday. Over the last thirty days, um, the police department's handled three calls for assistance with individuals, uh, suffering with mental health. Had one menacing, eight traffic crashes, five sex offense offenses, uh, three residential alarms, four peace officer calls, one criminal damaging, one suspicious circumstance, a neighbor dispute, a civil dispute, and two calls reference, uh, scams. We had one that walked in, uh, yesterday, who received a check in the mail for an item that she was wanting to sell. Problem was, is they sent sixteen hundred dollars more than what she was asking. After doing a quick research on the check, these checks are being used on Craigslist at the moment. So, if you receive a check like this, um, please don't cash it. Don't attempt to do anything with it. Your best bet is, is just shred it and don't send your product. Uh, I've got one new part-time officer hired. I'd like to ask the trustees to, to vote on hiring this officer. Richard Elliott, uh, his date of hire was five thirty-one of nineteen, at a rate of ten dollars an hour. Um, also this Friday, I'll be hiring another full-time officer. Uh, this officer will be on day shift. Doug Hessler, uh, again, his date of hire is going to be six fourteen of nineteen, at a rate of eighteen dollars an hour. I had the opportunity to assist Officer Waymire with teaching an advanced, uh, criminal interdiction class out in Las Vegas. While I was out there with Officer Waymire, we were assisting the Nevada Highway Patrol with this class. Criminal indicators were observed on a tractor trailer. A traffic stop was conducted on this tractor trailer. During the course of the interview with the driver, the driver admitted to carrying a large amount of U.S. currency. A K-nine was deployed to conduct a free air sniff around this semi. The K-nine alerted positively on the tractor trailer. A search of the tractor trailer revealed five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in cash and, uh, located inside of a suitcase. The trailer was found to be stolen out of Ohio, more specifically Mechanicsburg, which is over in Champaign County. And the tractor was stolen out of Georgia. I have photos up here if anybody would like to see that. To date, four dye up, that's been the largest cash seizure during the training exercise. Is that correct?
Just for this year?
Just for this year.
Would you only have a million dollars here?
So that poor guy wasn't expecting two officers from Ohio to be in Las Vegas, and had come through with a, a tractor trailer that's stolen.
You should've just hooked that up and drove that house.
Along with the cash, I mean.
Yeah.
I tried.
Everybody's obviously familiar with the tornado that hit on May twenty-seventh. But about five days prior to that, we had a tornado hit in the southwestern quadrant of the township. The damage of that was not as sufficient as this one, but there was two that we had within about a five to seven day grace period that hit the township. We have pictures from the, the night of the tornado. If anybody wants to look through these, they're nighttime photos. Came out very crystal clear. Um, these things will be things that we get into frames or something and hung up for part of history for the township. Vehicle B, uh, received four new tires. Uh, two of the tires were damaged of driving through, uh, all the debris, uh, making sure people weren't looting, which is, that's something that we came across during this time. Uh, so those got replaced. As of June the tenth, uh, the Perry Township Police Department joined the National Alliance on Mental Illness. NAMI, uh, provides crisis intervention training to officers along as, uh, they, they serve as a point of contact for resources for individuals and/or families, uh, who suffer from ill, mental illness. Uh, so here in the near future, the officers that have not been to crisis intervention training will be sent to receive this, uh, training. Vehicle D, the old Expedition, um, having a lot of issues with, it's currently out receiving a new, receiving a new freeze plug that's, uh, leaking. But currently, if you get the vehicle up to forty, forty-five miles an hour, the entire front end starts shaking really bad. So the top speed for that vehicle right now is forty, forty-five miles an hour. What I suggest is that we start evaluating this vehicle, but what we have in the vehicle versus what the vehicle is worth. In excellent condition, that vehicle's worth seventy-five hundred dollars. So even at its best, which anybody's lying if they're sitting in this room saying that thing's in excellent condition. But, or the best case, it's seventy-five hundred dollars we're getting that for that vehicle. There's already ten grand sunk into the motor, so we're not gonna be able to recoup all the money that was put into this cruiser. I'm sure what the, uh, what's causing this front end vibration, but if it's another thousand, two thousand dollars to sink into it to keep it running for another six to eight months, I think that we're, we're looking at something that's a lost cause. So something to, to think about, uh, of doing something with that vehicle probably here in the very near future.
Is vehicle D the one that I was talking to West Alexandria about them purchasing from us?
That was vehicle C that's out there, but it's the same.
Same condition, but that one, D has a new motor and so does C, correct?
Yes.
Have we laid any more pros and cons? Do we know anything about, talking to, I've, I've been in contact with the chief out there in West Alex a couple of times. Yeah, I think, no, one of the chiefs of the city.
Yep.
And, uh, I don't know if they still have an interest in that at all, if I should pursue that or talk to them about it.
I haven't heard anything else from them. The last that I heard was they were gonna look at purchasing a, a new Explorer. I'm not sure.
Maybe I better get on the spot and check. I'd give up super D.
I'll need a resolution for the two new hires. If we can put them in one resolution.
Hard.
I can put them in one resolution.
For the hires, new hires.
I'll make a motion we hire the two new officers.
Second. Price.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
On the, uh, flat tires on the car that we got during the debris, is our insurance gonna be involved in that? Or is that somebody asking about a police fund? How does that work?
That was something that, um, I went ahead and took out of the, the police fund. I've been working with Rhonda and with Missy, uh, saving all of our receipts of anything that we have had to replace due to, due to this. All of our fuel receipts, our man-hours.
This may be something we fall under FEMA, you know?
Right, yes.
If our insurance doesn't cover that.
Right, yeah, we need to keep track of the.
I was thinking. And the, the tires we actually plugged and patched, they held up for about twenty-four hours, and.
Pretty good.
And, uh, after that, it was, um, time to look at other options. Now, the other two tires that were good on that vehicle, uh, we had them taken off. I'm gonna end up ordering a rim for both of those, and having those stored over at Marlowe's Towing. So that way, if we get a flat in the future, he can come out, we could just pop the tire off and put that, that tire back on and go.
All the loaders and everything, the tires survived? I mean, I wouldn't be surprised. I mean.
Or the trucks.
Yeah, we were driving over trees that month.
I know.
Yes.
Thing about track towing, we got.
Well, no on that.
I do have some nails in them, but.
Really?
Yeah, well.
Not surprised.
Yeah, other than that, everything's holding up.
And then if I can say something, if anybody has volunteered at any time, I have volunteer, uh, sheets up here, and these will be turned into FEMA, so just see me afterwards and I'll give you one or a couple or whatever.
Okay, did anybody, visitors have anything they wanted to?
Um, I'd like to say that Charlie, um, myself, Pete Littleton, and Barb Colleton have started a disaster relief fund. Um, it's a nonprofit organization that we have started, um, to take donations, and it can help with any disaster anywhere. So we didn't make it just specific for here, that way we could help anybody anywhere. It is not affiliated with Perry Township. It's a private thing that we did, um, without Perry Township. A lot of it is going to help Perry Township. I actually got our first ten thousand dollar donation today, um, from a company. So, we'll be getting that distributed. I think a lot of. I think a lot of that we're going to help with building materials, replacing appliances, things like that for some homes and people. We've had a lot of people contact us. I have a company that does sell appliances. We also refurbish appliances, recycle appliances. So we have hooked up with Red Cross to help with that, and they are sending us people with vouchers to help with that, and also people that are uninsured. My company has already helped about eight thousand people get appliances back into their homes of things that were ruined. But with this program that we're doing now, we'll be able to help people with all kinds of problems. But if any flooding, anything like that would happen where there was a disaster anywhere, we can help somebody, not just in Perry Township. But right now, our focus obviously is Perry Township and the surrounding areas to help. So if anybody knows anybody that is looking, we've had a lot of people contact us saying, you know, we want a legitimate nonprofit to be able to do that. We have everything done correctly. I have my attorneys that have reviewed everything, and it's all been done to the T, so if anybody knows anybody.
There has been some great things. I talked about individuals, and I will say there has been some companies did some great things in this area too.
For sure. And the tarp, like you said, those were donated to us by Kramer.
Right, that's right.
When I called him, I told him what we were doing out here, and he gave them to me by the box load to bring out here. And those were huge hundred-pound tarps. So I went out expecting, you know, tarp. And then I thought, oh, we can just unload them when we get there, and they were seventy-five to a hundred pounds apiece.
Yes, I fill in the box trying to get them out.
They covered a big area, they covered a big area of roof for bigger...
Yeah, and he actually has now donated another box. So if there are more people that are being able to tarp more stuff up, we should be able to help them.
Are they here or are they up at the...
They're not, I have them in my warehouse because they were out of room.
I finally ran out.
Yeah.
And I didn't know, because people said, I said, I don't know anymore.
Yes.
There's two at the end of the sidewalk, if that's who they are, and I'm like, that's it.
Some at Perry B sometimes too.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have more that we have to donate, and he can get me more if we need more. And he's also willing, he's going through his warehouse. He said he has a lot of plywood sheets and stuff like that that he's going to donate to us that they've just been holding on to forever. So there's a lot of things that have happened. And one of the people that needs recognized is... I know him as Nice Arms.
Oh, Ben Aitman.
And that came from...
There's a story behind it all.
There is, there is. And it wasn't me thinking he had nice arms. But I brought out some people out here that as soon as I called them, they came out with a backhoe, I think is what that thing is called, I don't know.
It's a tractor.
Tractor.
Sure, tractor. Okay, well, they didn't have tracks on it, and they had just put four hundred dollar tires on this thing. And of course, everything's getting popped everywhere you go. And Ben had told them that they could store it out at his place so that they didn't have to keep driving it back and forth because they were coming from Springfield. They came out the next day to pick it up, and he had replaced their tires with these foam tires that don't pop. And he said, they've been sitting in my barn, and I knew that I had kept them for a reason, and you guys needed them. And he wouldn't let them pay for them or anything and have their tires replaced. I mean, it's just...
And I'd also like to thank Cody Garber.
Yes.
Who came out, and he's donated over thirty-four hundred dollars of his own money from taking debris down to the landfill.
Yeah, and one, he, him and Ben and...
And Ben, yes.
Dwayne Uger. Dwayne Uger came out when we tried to get to the horses. We were trying to bury the dead horse so that all kinds of animals aren't coming in. I mean, it would have taken us...
No way.
Ten years to get back there. You know, the way we were going.
It took you twenty minutes to get to from the house to the barn, just walking.
With hu... yeah, oh, yes. I mean, we were climbing over trees and everything, and you couldn't get anywhere. So they came in, no questions asked, cleared all this stuff out. They brought in, there was no water out there anymore because of the electric, they go off of a well. Came in with huge water tanks and brought them out there, and Dwayne wrote his phone number right on the side and said, when you run out of water, call me and I'll switch them back out.
You called a vet, the homeowners were in the hospital in Columbus, so there was no one there with the horses.
Right, so we got a vet in to inspect the horses.
Now, there was a roof on that barn.
Part of it.
Well, they asked me and my son if we'd tarp that, and I looked at them, I said, no. I'm not going to go... It didn't look like it was stable enough to get up on that.
The roof where we were, the bar, the roof wasn't, it didn't leak or anything, so I'm...
Well, the one side did.
The one side, and the back.
And I said, well, use the other side, it'll keep dirt to dry. But I was like, no, I'm not going to go up on that roof, I don't think that looks too good there.
And their care keeper, she's a handicapped woman, has used her one hand. And she was climbing all those trees with a five-dollar bucket of water, going down to the stream and carrying water back over all the trees, trying to get water to those horses because they couldn't get a trailer to get the horses out, and there was no water. So Dwayne and Ben and Cody came right in, no questions asked, and really, really saved the day out there, so.
Fabulous people.
And I know all the roads now.
Oh, yeah. You know, I kept hearing, I mean, there was a lady came in here, and I didn't realize their house was gone. She came in here after some items, and I'm like, oh, your house died. It seemed like you kept finding out more and more. Okay.
I was wanting to know, and this is probably more for Chief Littleton. We have been having some issues out around our property with a green truck that's extremely loud, and it's either an SUV or a van. We can't see it very well because it usually comes through at dark time, where they're stopping in front of my house, my neighbor's house, and two doors down. We ran the truck off a couple of times. I've called central dispatch, but by the time somebody gets out there, they're long gone. And I didn't know if there's any other options to get ahold of anybody other than going through central dispatch.
That's the best way to get ahold of us.
Okay. Because I know the other night when I did, well, it was actually the night that the tornado went through just south, yeah, just south of us. I called, and of course, somebody came from Montgomery County, and he said, well, maybe they're just out assessing damage. And I said, well, if they were doing that, when our light came on, they took off. They didn't stop and ask any questions of anybody, they just took off as soon as our lights came on.
Were they like casing or making noise, what do you mean?
They go by really, really slow, or like this night, they actually stopped in front of my neighbor who's going through cancer treatments right now. They stopped in front of his house with their flashers on.
See, we've had there somebody supposedly in meat delivery person.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, that's a white truck.
Yeah, a white truck, yeah.
The truck that you're talking about, we had to run in with that individual over on Old Dayton, right there by the cemetery. And the guy that was supposedly with him took off on foot, ended up running through the township and back into New Lebanon. We've identified those two individuals. However, that particular night, they weren't doing anything criminal. But I've had multiple reports of that same vehicle down in the area pulling into people's driveways and doing a lot of suspicious activity. Those two individuals are very well-known from New Lebanon, us, Brookville, Trotwood as thieves. So the best bet that you could do is just call nine-one-one or call the non-emergency number and everything. I can't release names because at this time, they haven't done anything criminal.
Well, now criminals shouldn't we know?
I would not suggest calling the non-emergency, I would suggest calling nine-one-one. Because sometimes the non-emergency line, they're like hung up with other people and they don't answer.
Well, nine-one-one respond, because I called them a couple of times, and they tell me they don't service the area because we get through centralized dispatch.
Well...
Where do you live?
Soffer Springs in Little Richmond.
So that, your nine-one-one is going to the Inglewood Dispatch Center? Because Brookville and New Lebanon, that's who they use. So that's where your nine-one-one call is going.
Have you got a West Alexandria?
Yes, I have a West Alexandria.
See, that throws it off sometimes when they think it's out of the county.
Right.
Yeah. So the best bet is to call the non-emergency number there, the regional dispatch center in Dayton.
Because I said, it took like forty minutes for somebody to come out the other night when I did call them.
Your name is Kristen, is it?
Charity.
Charity. Do we have twenty-four-seven coverage now?
I'm needing one more full-time officer, then we will be up to twenty-four-hour coverage.
Is it the two-two-five-four-three-five-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
And when we have coverage, is that just one person or two?
Right now, it's just one. There are some nights and some days of the week that there'll be somebody here that overlaps the two shifts, so there will be two. But most of the time right now, it's just the one.
When you go out of the township with the K-9 unit, is there someone else that covers Perry Township when that happens?
Yep.
So at that point, there's two people here.
Okay, we've got this list, this sign list, and the people that want to speak. When you, if you would just go up to the podium and give us your name and your address, and then we'll know what, where you're coming from. So is Kristen here?
I already spoke, she spoke.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Okay, Doug, I need Doug.
No further comments.
Okay. Is this Evie?
Yep.
Okay. Evie, would you speak to us, please?
I live at five-six-six Sheep Road, and I have had issues with my neighbors for various reasons at five-six-four Sheep Road. The issue I'm having right now is their yard's about three foot tall. I've called Kate several times. My neighbor, what's his name, Mike Rogers, tells them he's going to put in a wildlife habitat. So that's the new thing, if you don't want to mow your grass, you're putting in a wildlife habitat. So I called the wildlife habitat place that Kate gave me the information for. They said they are not working with anybody on Sheep Road without this. So I called Kate back about the habitat information. Well, she's going to keep an eye on it. I said, Kate, do you know the regulations? She goes, well, I'll keep an eye on it with the regulations. So I said, do you know the regulations? Well, no. Well, how are you going to keep an eye on it without knowing the regulations? Because I read the paper and I talked to the lady. The lady gave me her name. I asked Kate to call this lady, Kate did not call the lady. She just corresponds with Mr. Rogers next door, who is super lazy. He doesn't want to cut his grass, so now their grass is, like I said, three foot tall. Now it's starting to lay over, so I guess it's going to get shorter as it goes. So now we have tons of ticks. You can't even go out in the daytime without mosquitoes surrounding, around where my pool is where the kids are swimming. I'm furious, they don't care. I don't know how they're going to have a wildlife habitat when you have to have all these regulations with sustainable water and all this. There's no pond on their property. They do have standing water in a ditch when it rains, which adds to the mosquitoes and the ticks. I've got pictures on my phone, which, you know, it doesn't matter because Kate's been by there. The stuff in the front of their house on the road is at least twenty foot tall on the road. So they mow a strip down their driveway, which is five hundred foot long. One strip up, one strip back. The rest, they let go. But another thing is, how are they going to have wildlife there, which, other than ticks and mosquitoes, when you have three or four pit bulls, that's going to kill anything that comes on that yard? So then there's another issue. They had their dogs with the electric fence they put in, which was great in oh-six because their dogs were coming on my property, on my front porch, growling, eating my cat's food. So they did put their fence around their whole five acres, which is great. Now, all of a sudden, they're leaving their gates open, their pit bull with the collar on with the electric stuff is coming in my yard. I have my five grandkids are there now, I have five grandkids terrified of those dogs. My ninety-five-year-old grandma's out there trying to sit on the porch, and she's hollering because the dog's in the backyard and she don't know whose dog it is, and she's hollering, and she can't move fast enough. So I, you text the people next door, which you never get a response on because that's just how they are. They never get, but yet the gate's still open. So why have these dogs with the gate open when you bother to put this fence around and all that? It's just all hateful spite on us. So this is what I get to live with mosquitoes, ticks, and three-foot-tall yard. And, but they're going to do a wildlife habitat that nobody seems to know anything about, including, you know, when I called and investigated it, they...
This is six fifty-four Sheep Road, Billy Rogers?
Yes.
There's a notation on here. More to the situation, I'm going to get with Kate on this, I know a little bit about that wildlife habitat thing.
Yeah.
And I'll get with her, and I promise you I'll get...
I was going to say, because there's a whole list of stuff that they have the requirements. But the place that I called, they said, we're not working with anybody. Well, if the wildlife place isn't working with anybody, and Kate doesn't know the regulations, but I talked to the lady named Ashley and passed on her number, Kate wouldn't even call the lady. And then Kate said, well, why don't you call and talk to your neighbors? None of us can talk to the neighbors. We don't like neighbors because they're the only ones on our whole street that don't take care of their property.
I think Mr. Rogers said, won't you be my neighbor?
Yeah, well, it's not that, Mr. Rogers. Just Mr. Rogers is lazy, they don't care, they...
It's obviously a lie.
Well, their dogs are, I stand and work in my yard, and their dogs are standing out right at the fence line, barking and barking. So I bought a bullhorn, and I'm cussing. I'm cussing because you can't talk to the neighbors, you can't talk to them like normal people. So I'm cussing for them to get their dogs away from the fence because I care about my yard, and I'm working on my flowers. But you can't do it in peace because their pit bulls are barking and barking and barking.
Have the pit bulls came on your property?
Pardon me?
Have the pit bulls come on your property?
Yes, and I checked the fence line to see if, okay, maybe they dug under or something like that. There's, I can't see any dig marks, but then there's a fence line of like honeysuckles. But now I'm not getting in there because we have a mosquito issue due to all their neglect next door.
If they come on your property...
I'm shooting them.
Call...
And I think it was Mr. Littleton, did I talk to you about that? Come on my property, I am going to shoot you. I'm not going to ask questions later about my grandkids getting mauled and my grandma, who's ninety-five, getting attacked because she's terrified to sit on the back porch now because of the dog. Their gates open all the time. I'm shooting the dog.
There's a section of the IRIR code that if that's what you do, that you have seven, sort of between seven to fourteen days to make it right with the homeowner.
Make what right? After you shoot them, all paid, all dig, the whole one buried.
I think they have to be threatened with people or a wild, or livestock.
I'm going to kill the dog when it comes in my yard again.
Not necessarily, what did you say, say that again? You can't just tell someone they can shoot the dog.
You come on my property, you're dead meat.
If that's what you do, because you feel that your life or somebody else's life is in jeopardy on that property, you're justified to do so. However, there's a caveat in that IRIR code that if the dog is injured or it dies or anything like that, you have to be the one to make it right.
What does that mean? So I have to wait till my grandma's dead or one of my grandkids are mauled because I'm work, I'm not there all the time. These people should keep their gates shut, but they won't keep the gate shut because they know it irritates.
And I'm not disagreeing with anybody. I'm just saying that's why the IRIR...
And I know exactly because our, because we live on a farm, and our neighbors stole, got out and killed everyone.
The dog could disappear, yeah.
There you go. I didn't even have any...
But he ended up killing his own dog. But what he's trying to tell you is just be careful, and I understand because of my grandkids.
Right, I'm not going to waste all the tax money, I'm killing it.
But if your neighbors don't get along, you don't get along with just...
They don't get along, none of, none, look down on my street, everybody takes care of their yards, everybody.
But he's saying be careful of their rep, repercussion.
The problem with what we have is people could have your wildlife. It don't have to be that you're, I mean, it's a good excuse.
So there's mosquitoes and ticks galore that, I guess that's considered wildlife. Is it mosquitoes and ticks wildlife?
There's one on your roof.
You got to qualify.
Exactly. And then here, my grandkids are out there in the day... Exactly. And then here my grandkids are out there in the daytime, these mosquitoes are beating up.
I, I, it's hard to believe. A couple of years ago, I got in trouble for mowing perfectly legal.
Mowing what?
An area that was over.
Well.
Because it was, it was under a government program. It's a wildlife.
Well, the people I call, they have no idea. They're not working with anybody. They just, they just let things grow up and call it wildlife.
Okay, so now that we're aware of it, we'll take, we'll.
Well, Kate knew about it.
We'll have to look at it and see what we can.
But I called, talked to the lady and called Kate back with the lady's name and number and Kate wouldn't do it. So she messaged, uh I guess Mr. Rogers. And then he uh messaged her back, said, I don't have to work with anybody. I'm doing the there's no sustainable water except the water in his ditch that's feeding the mosquitoes.
Let me assure you that there is going to be a change one way or another.
I appreciate it.
Did he mow the grass on the seventeenth, the twentieth, and the twenty-second?
He hasn't mowed his grass period this year, except for a strip across the front, a strip. And a strip up each side of his driveway. That's it. All year. No, he mowed a few strips around his house. But the front yard is three foot tall. It's, it's outrageous.
Let us take care of it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You can also call the health department about the mosquitoes.
Right, cause we can't even sit out during the day. That's pretty bad.
Yeah, I had a neighbor that didn't mow either and they also had standing water. And the health department came in and deemed it a hazard because of the diseases that the kids.
Well, the ditch out front, when it rains, there's, I keep mine weed eat it and sprayed with weed killer and all that. Cause I don't want all that. Well, it's not gonna do me any good when mine looks great and then the neighbors is standing tall with water, mosquitoes. And like I said, ticks galore. Two of my grandkids have never had ticks on their head. Now all of a sudden they got ticks on their head.
Okay, we need to dishorse the dead. Now we gotta.
Well, hopefully next year Sheep Road is in application for issue two to widen resource.
I heard that.
And that area will be addressed.
Right.
Probably with tile or something to close that ditch in and get that water moving.
Good. That'll be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, Brad.
Yeah, I'm gonna wait until next meeting to make my comments.
Alright. Pat.
I have the same complaint she has on. We don't have pit bulls. But our neighbor hasn't moved at all this year and only twice last year.
What's your address?
Twenty-three ninety-five Crawford Tom's Run.
Twenty-three ninety-five?
Yeah, Huff is the last name.
Twenty-three ninety-five.
There's another one at two thirty-five Crawford Tom's Run, too, I seen. Hasn't been touched this year. Kate's been working on them, but I mean, she just, she hasn't got.
And we got one right in the street there, too.
Right.
That's a drug house, so. I'm just saying like.
I know. Mowing her bull.
We'll let Kate know about that.
Yeah, Ron, I'd like to complain about my neighbor next door. He mows his grass too often. It makes my yard look bad.
You're a hay. I'll trade ya.
Ron and Mindy, you get your piece of upset or do you have more to run talk about?
Um well, afterwards I'd like to find out from you guys, set a plan for this week for Perry B. I'm not gonna waste everyone else's time with that. Um the only other thing that I wanted to add was just, I'm just a person doing a thing. But I couldn't do that thing without Rhonda or Charlie or Kristen, who really stepped up when we moved over to Perry B. And made it a possibility to happen. And I don't think there's enough people who can say thank you to these guys for the work that they put on that Monday and Tuesday when we went from this building over to Perry B. And Dale and Scott for the repairs and my cleaning. And for letting me have a building when I lost my keys. And yeah, so I mean, there's a, a lot of people. It's, 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 the Perry B thing is not a me thing. It's a team thing. And I couldn't do it without the people that stepped up to help.
Well, the reason why I moved, moved to Perry B because the auditor come in
In this.
in this building here and you see all the boxes and he's got all the tables filled during the day. That's why I moved to Perry B.
Well, Perry B was lonely anyway, right? Yeah, I mean, it was just a random idea that I had and I messaged Rhonda and said, hey, what if? And then all of a sudden, it's a thing.
We can clean this out and, you know, clean up, do a few little things and get this thing up and running. So it worked out.
Okay, anybody else? I do have one thing that's informational. And you know, I told you folks, I'll tell you the truth. I'll document what I tell you. Bonnie Burleson filed a lawsuit against the township. And her claim was that we were slow to respond to her public records requests. Which we were not. It was that a timely manner. And so the um her attorney and I know what involvement she has, but anyway, they're willing to settle for forty-eight hundred dollars of your money.
Well, isn't that something?
Now, see, I'm one of the people that I can guarantee you that I will never, ever sign off on that. So I got ahold of our attorney who handles those things.
The lady who said that we needed this party and we don't have any money is now gonna take our damage.
I talked to the attorney and I instructed them that none of us want to be victimized by any kind of a, see, this is a potential landslide. Any slime ball could sue us. And we are not gonna pay forty-eight hundred dollars of your money over a frivolous lawsuit.
Don't do it.
Pardon me?
Don't do it. Don't pay.
Oh, we're not.
Good.
And the thing is.
This community has much bigger needs than some.
That's right. So after talking to the attorney, I told her in no way are we interested in giving up forty-eight, forty-eight hundred dollars to Bonnie and her attorneys. I said, you fight it at any cost because we got a winning case. And she said, I agree. I said, push very hard to make somebody pay our attorney fees. You know, there's, this public records thing has gotten totally out of control. We get five, six, seven on one page of the paper. I also, and I still believe that we should hire one person to do nothing but handle public records requests if they don't slow down. It's just a matter of harassment. That's all it is.
So I got a question about that though. If her lawsuit is because the public records weren't turned over, won't the lawsuit go away if you just give her the records?
Well, she had.
She has.
It's a tiny, it's because she didn't get them in what she considers a timely man.
See, the law says that it has to be a timely man.
Look how lo- look, look up how long it takes you to get them from the highway patrol. It says right on their website, up to six weeks.
And we're doing our best. When you get a bucket load of time, when you get a bucket load of requests for public information at a time, you do one at a time.
Get timely and very loose.
And so timely is timely.
But very loose.
Was that, was that the description on the lawsuit?
I beg your pardon?
Was that the description on the lawsuit?
Yeah. Because it is a legal matter. What I told you is a public record. So I won't go into anything that particulars in it because it is a legal matter.
Did that have anything to do with the sunshine law?
I'm sorry, me?
Have anything to do with the sunshine law?
Not that I know of.
No.
Not that I know of.
That wasn't described on the lawsuit?
No, we don't wanna talk too much about sunshine law. I got a certificate where I went to school for that. I'll, I'll go heads up with anybody on sunshine.
That was a requirement that we get that certificate.
A requirement from who?
From the Attorney General.
Really?
No, it's not. It's your information.
Okay, I make a motion that we go into executive session to talk about. Employment issue.
Okay, a second.
Mayors?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sim?
If you'll excuse us.
Are we going in there?
Yeah.
Thank you, my dear.
Nope, couldn't find any.
Yeah, I've seen one. I want.
You want, you should tell me that's what you wanted. I'll start bringing them. I have them in my, my, my go bag for military. That was a necessity. I'm kidding. What are you gonna do all day?
Make room.
Right.
You play dominoes, reserve them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
That's before they pick cell up and knock them down.
You got the thing turned on?
Yes. Okay, motion to go back into regular session?
Yes. I make that motion to go back.
Mayors?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Price?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I make the motion that we adjourn.
Well, was there anything else in the policy handbook?
I don't know where it stands on the policy handbook.
We're working on it.
But I just, what she mentioned. I'll stay at my.
Did you not follow? It's done. It just needs to be approved.
We gotta review.
Yes.
Question. Which Douglas officer did we promote?
The Douglas first name or Douglas last name? It's a confusion.
Oh, Brian.
Brian got promoted? We told him that and he didn't, he denied it.
He said that he doesn't know that he did. So just so you know, he doesn't know he got promoted.
Oh, good. That means we do it.
Well, that's it.
He says he's part-time and therefore he's exempt from.
He started here in the nineties.
Yeah, I remember Doug. That's what I said. I said, I'm like, he was here before.
Yep, he was.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so I guess we're.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Say it.
We are still under state emergency.
Yes, we are.
That's right.
I mean, just so everybody knows.
Do we know when they're.
What?
Price?
Well, no, the township is under state emergency. We declared it.
Roll home. Is there a timeframe on that?
Sim?
Yes. No, no more than three months, but we can, we can un the patches. What do you?